To order, at this time, I would like to recognize several students from Hidnite Elementary who have been leading our pledge tonight. First off, who I think was unable to be with us is Ryan Budd, son of Cindy Kraus, and Corey Hall, a fifth grader, son of Sharlinda Orin and Corey Hall, Evie Harrington, a fifth grader, daughter of Heather Bentley, and Eli Kirk, a fifth grader, son of Shane and Sheena Kirk. And I hope I got those names right. If I didn't, please accept my apology. If we could, if we could get those young folks to come up front and lead us in the pledge.
And you have two options. You could stand at the podium, or if you would rather be closer to the flag, you could do that. Which do you choose? Okay, perfect.
Attention, so, pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Good job.
Thank you, folks, for helping with the pledge tonight. Members of the board, you have the agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure of the board with our agenda?
Make a motion to accept.
A motion by Board Member Reese.
Second.
Second, Board Member Ryan. Any discussion? All in favor of the approval of agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll turn the session over to Dr. Heffner now for our honors and recognitions. We have several tonight. It's Dr. Heffner.
Thank you Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Argüés, board members, and members of our audience. This is my favorite part of every month's board meeting, and some of you are laughing because I know you're thinking, I wish she would say something else when I get up here. But it's the truth. It is my favorite part of every board meeting, and tonight it's extra special because I'm going to start out with the first recognition of a staff member who is actually also one of my dearest former students. So, Board Member Ryan, would you come up and help me, please? The school system is very honored to recognize Exceptional Children's Teacher Heather Wegant from Hidnite Elementary School as the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Educator of Excellence. Principal Amy Dagel says Heather is the epitome of a servant leader, and she says she models high ethical standards and a growth mindset in all that she does. And do you know, that hasn't changed a lot since she was a sixth grader in my math class. She, um, she was very special. As a recipient, DPI paid Heather's registration and mileage to the General Conference for the Conference of Exceptional Children in the fall of 2022. The conference was held at the Curry Convention Center in Greensboro. Mrs. Wegant was also recognized at the ceremony honoring recipients from across the state. She is A+. We're so blessed to have her. Congratulations, Heather Wegant. We're re-gifting the plaque, okay? And we have to get a picture.
Okay.
I can write it here with, yes. I would love to, actually. I did put in there that she was super smart also. Tonight was a special night for us because we held a reception for newly certified National Board teachers, and then also we had a handful that they renewed their National Board certification. Alexander County Schools recognizes teachers in the district who have earned or renewed their National Board certification each year. The process requires teachers to maintain high and rigorous standards of what accomplished teachers should do. The certification allows teachers to deepen their knowledge of their content and reflect on new ways to work with their students. North Carolina recognizes the certified staff members for their work with a 12% salary increase per year. In Alexander County, the teachers that have been newly certified with their National Board certification include Matt Cochran, he is a band teacher at West Alexander Middle School. Please come forward, Matt. And Matt, if you will, hold your placards that will go outside the door of your classroom. National Board Certified Teachers, all, sorry, slippery, slippery thing, yeah, yeah. We'll have Chris Campbell get that attached to the wall soon. But they have the special name plate outside their classrooms, as well as they have a special name badge, and I would just ask that you display that proudly. I know how hard you work for this. The next new recipient is Amanda Simpson. She's an eighth grade language arts teacher at West Alexander Middle School. New recipient and congratulations, Miriam Starnes, counselor at East Alexander Middle And the next name on the list is Charlotte Curly. However, when she was in my classroom at Bethlehem in sixth grade, we all called her Charlie. So is it okay if I call you Charlie Curly, sixth grade math teacher and science teacher at East Alexander Middle School? And then the last new recipient, congratulations, Tina Walker. She is a sixth grade science teacher at East Alexander Middle School. Those things are, watch that name plaque. You know what? I think maybe this is a recipient. Okay. Board Member Reese, will you help me with renewals, please? Six teachers completed their renewal with National Board Certification, and that has to be completed, I was under the impression every 10 years, but I learned tonight that now if you've earned it after a certain date, you have to renew every five years. So regardless, it still takes work, and I am so very proud of those who take the initiative to renew. Those renewals include Amber Huffman, she's the Family and Consumer Sciences teacher at Alexander Central. Next, Selena Curfies, a kindergarten teacher at Bethlehem Elementary. Marnie Wills, EC teacher at Ellendale Elementary. Monica Anderson, fifth grade teacher at Ellendale Elementary. Kelly Tease was unable to be here, but she did renew. She's the instructional coach at Taylorsville Elementary. And last, but certainly not least, Leslie Hardy, she's an EC teacher at West Alexander And while you all are getting arranged for the picture, and you'll need to get in there, Board Member Reese, North, I'm proud to say this, North Carolina has the most nationally Board Certified teachers in the entire United States. And that has been the case for the last six years, so six years in a row. So, North Carolina, go. Appalachian State University has been celebrated for having the most nationally Board Certified teachers, and that is nationwide. So, go ASU for those mountaineers. And 486 North Carolina teachers earned that endorsement for the first time this year. So congratulations to all those teachers.
I'd like to congratulate each of y'all on your initial certifications as well as your renewal. That is a very strenuous process. I do remember going through that, and I know there's a lot of tears and a lot of anxiety involved with that, but congratulations. You bring something to your classroom, it makes you look at your classroom, do a real deep examination of your classroom. I still remember going through that process, and I still look back at a lot of the reflection I did through that process today. So congratulations, congratulations also, Mrs. Wegant. We have reached the public comment portion. If we have visitors that wish to step out, feel free to step out this time. We do have one individual signed up for public comment tonight, Mr. Andrew Latchford. His topic is parent comments and board administrative responses. Mr. Latchford, I'm going to read our procedures right quick. Number one, each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Number two, only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Number three, speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairman in order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks only board member or school employee will be caused for ending of a particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. Number four, the public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Number five, speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items, items which are closed session matters, including but not limited to attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisitions or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115(c-321) and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employees' records. Number six, speakers will be courteous in their language and presentations. Thank you. Mr. Latchford?
Good evening. As usual, I wish to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Andrew Latchford, and I live in the Bethlehem community. At the December meeting, a parent posed a question about the board's position on children who are identifying as animals. She stated that surrounding counties have had such matters brought to their attention, and Catawba and Iredell Counties board have said they would not entertain the idea of kids identifying as an animal. She specifically asked the question, where do you stand on that? Before you stop me from bringing up an urban legend, just hear me out. The response she received was that at the meeting two months ago, a statement was made into the board's position on that. She was told, you can go back and watch that on YouTube, and you'll hear a statement from our school system. The parent interrupted and rephrased her question to ask, are you going to stay with Catawba County and Iredell County? The specific reply given was, I think if you watch that meeting, then it will tell you our stance on that. I went back and reviewed the November meeting, and at about the 59-minute mark of the video, the following statements were made by Dr. Heffner and his board member Cooksey. Dr. Heffner said, a national rumor has now affected our Alexander County school systems, namely our middle and high schools. The rumor involves students dressing up as cats, meowing, hissing, and requesting litter boxes. I'm going to on the record tonight saying that no such requests have been made or granted in this school system. I want to say again, if you don't understand that, we do not have litter boxes in any restrooms, and I'm very troubled by those who continue to spread this untruth. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Cooksey replied, that was a hard note to end on and for me to follow. Dr. Heffner said, I know, I know, we need something happier than that. Mr. Cooksey said, well, it does get tiresome. Dr. Heffner said, it does. Mr. Cooksey said, to answer rumors that are unfounded in fact. And Dr. Heffner replied, and to read them in print. At that point, Mr. Cooksey moved on in the agenda. At no point in that exchange is the Alexander County School Board's position on the potential for future requests addressed, as was asked by last month's parent, or December's parent, I'm sorry. The statement only states a lack of incidents and requests. This begs the question, is this board prepared to make such a statement or policy against requests for unreasonable accommodations as other school boards have done, or will continue to stand behind the statements of fact that do not address the public concern that was brought to its attention? I assure you that to mislead a concerned parent is just as important to this community's trust of this board and its administration as our kitty litter pants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latchford. Board members, you have the consent agenda in your packet. What is the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda? Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion by Board Member Bowman, second by Board Member Argüés. Is there any discussion about our consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will recognize our Transportation Department assessment, Transportation Department Assessment, I'd like to recognize Andrew LaRoe, President of the B.A.I.S.C.A.L.L.C., and Rodney Hardy, Director of Transportation for Suri County Schools.
Dr. Heffner, Chairman Robinson, and members of the board, good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and give you hopefully a brief presentation of some work that we've recently done with an operational assessment of your Transportation Department. And by the way, it's BASCA.
Sorry, but.
I applaud you for just saying, I'm going to spell it.
Thank you.
It's a very long acronym that I came up with. Sometimes I wondered if I could have done something a little simpler. We were asked to perform an operational assessment by your superintendent of the Transportation Department. We started work on that just a few weeks ago, really, and were able to come in and basically follow a process that we routinely follow during operational assessments. A little background on who we are, I am retired Chief Operations Officer from Guilford County Schools, 2012, and I've been working in public school administration most of my entire career. Started out as a shop teacher in the 80s, I guess, and was Director of Maintenance with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools for a number of years, and went on to work with some architectural firms and do some national consulting, and eventually ended up in Guilford County and retired, and this was something that I'd like to do and have a lot of fun with. What the basis of our company is, is that we use people that are current administrators in other school districts that have a lot of knowledge to be on a project team with us and work on assessments throughout the state. We also have quite a few people that are long since retired and join our work teams. So, pleasure for me to be here, and Rodney, you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, board. I'm Rodney Hardy. I'm Transportation Director for Suri County. I've been in that position for 18 years. 13 years prior to that, I worked for the Department of Transportation, also in Suri County, with road planning and mapping and different things.
Just as soon as he started this project with us, he told us all he was getting ready to retire from Suri County Schools. So, it's our model beautifully. I have an assumption that you have a copy of this executive summary of our report.
It is actually attached to their agenda under Executive Section.
I'm going to just set these down on me before I drop them all at some point.
Andy, they may not all have a device. Would you all like to have a hard copy of the report?
Yeah, I'd be great.
The executive summary?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does everybody else have the attached?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to talk a little bit about our methodology as far as running an assessment. Basically, when we initially met Dr. Heffner, Dr. Clower, and developed basically a project plan that included making a request for documents, in the transportation world, there are a lot of reports that are filed with the State Department of Public Instruction and the Transportation Services Division. We requested copies of those to be reviewed. We requested financial records, records from Human Resources, a lot of information about your operations, your vehicles, your buses, equipment. We conducted a walkthrough of the garage. We didn't do a thorough facilities assessment, but we did, where we were able to walk through the garage and take a look. We went to the high school where buses were parked and had an opportunity to, you know, randomly look at some of your buses. We also scheduled interviews. On a particular day, we met with the transportation staff, we met with principals, bus drivers, your chief financial officer, communications.
School administrators.
Thank you. And got a good, broad section of the folks that work with the Transportation Department in those interviews. We also, on our project team, we also included Jay Temple, who's retired Director of Transportation for Davison County Schools. So he wasn't here on site, but he was working with our team to review records. Also Danny Reed, who's the Western Field Transportation Consultant for DPI Transportation Services. He's the person that does your inspections and works directly with you. And also Scott Denton, who's the Director of Transportation for Union County Schools. He kind of came into the game late. I can make some references to some of his information later. I don't want to read this report, but I want to read this one portion of it because I want to make sure that I get everything that's in this. Don't indulge me. As we processed the various documents and discussions necessary to construct an accurate image of the Transportation Department and Alexander County Schools, we've all been impressed by the dedication of Dr. Alicia Clower, Executive Director of Human Resources and Auxiliary Services, and the Transportation Department staff, who have held the department together for an extended period of time in the absence of the director. Been a monumental task placed upon Darren Parker, Stephen Mash, and Ravanda Carter to maintain the district's fleet of school buses, activity buses, and county-owned motor vehicles. Much has been asked of each of them through some very trying times, and it's obvious they have gone above and beyond what is normally expected. We present the assessment of the Transportation Department with all due respect to their extraordinary service. So, I'm not sure if they're here yet. We certainly want to acknowledge an outstanding job they've done. And the other piece of this is we would also like to acknowledge that we did not have an opportunity to interview John McCurdy, who has been the Director of Transportation for Alexander County Schools for 19 years. Unfortunately, Mr. McCurdy has not been able to work for some time due to extended FMLA leave. His first two periods of leave began on October 23, 2020. He returned to work a year later, limited to working half-days. Mr. McCurdy was injured in a accident on September 1, 2022, and has been out of work ever since. It's our understanding, he has filed for retirement, scheduled for March 1, 2023. His contributions to Alexander County Schools Department of Transportation throughout his successful career cannot be overstated.
And Andy, we do have a member of the Transportation Team here tonight, and I just want to make sure that the board puts a face with a name. Darren, would you please stand up? You have done an amazing job.
I wanted to read that because giving a report such as this one would seem like, you know, we maybe have something against somebody that we never had a chance to talk to. It was very unusual for us to do an assessment without the opportunity to talk to the director, but we made it through that. There are certain key points that I just want to bring up, and we're not going to talk about every single thing in the assessment, but we did make several recommendations. And first and foremost, really at the top of things, is that this Transportation Department has been going along for quite some time without any, without a Director of Transportation. There's lots of people that have filled in the void to keep those buses going up and down those roads every day, get safely transported. But you can't go so, but so long without having, and I want to use the word leadership, and in this case, it's not that there's been a lack of leadership from the people that have filled in, but you got to have someone who's looking forward, who's looking ahead, who's making plans for the future, who's recognizing trends and the things that are happening in transportation, old bus driver shortages, all those kind of issues, making plans and advising the superintendent and advising the board of a path forward. And that just hasn't occurred. And we could see good evidence that a lot of things that should be happening aren't happening. And it's very likely, just because the people that are here every day keeping it running, aren't really aware of notices from this State Department of Transportation of various things that are being asked of them or things that are happening. So our top recommendation, and recommendations in this executive summary are in bold. So the first one being, it is critical for the district to move forward as quickly as possible with hiring a new Director of Transportation, above and beyond anything. And it's my understanding, Mr. McCurdy has moved forward with his retirement and resignation, and we, during the course of the assessment, were able to prepare job description for looking at a composite of several that are currently being advertised to be hired in North Carolina at this time. One of them was his successor. So we have one pretty handy. Beyond that, we, you know, and I don't have a lot of slides, but I wanted I'll refer to in a moment, but kind of had to look at how many, how many people were actually in this organization that are keeping all of this work done? Because it's not just the school buses, it's county vehicles and quite of other responsibilities. And so there are, there are two administrators assigned to Transportation. One of them is the Director, we've been speaking of. The other is a person who is a TMS, Transportation Information Management System, TMS slash Cost Work. And then there are three mechanic positions. One of those mechanic positions was brought up to being an Assistant Director of Transportation during this period of time. So you've got, you've got three mechanics. One has been vacant for a very long time. One has been vacant for a very long time, and then the position was filled, and unfortunately, only after a few months on the job, that person was injured and has been out on workers' comp ever since.
That was the injury in December that I notified you all about.
So you essentially have, on every, on every given day, you have two mechanics that one, they have to share the load of running a fuel truck, which is very time-consuming to get out to all of the buses that are parked at all of the schools and keep them fueled, do the 30-day inspections required by the state, manage the garage, parts department and all of that, and then one person who's at the front desk answering the phone and responsible for two big jobs, as the TMS coordinator and as the cost clerk. So we, we looked at some guidance from DPI, and you can see that by that chart, you have 43 buses on the road. Two years ago, you had, three years ago, you had 51. You did one, you did dual, you combined your high school and your, excuse me, your middle school and your elementary. I'll get it right. And we're able to take some buses off, off the road. So you have the two administrators, and it says three mechanics, so that's right where you're at. You know, by DPI recommendations for a 26 to 50 bus garage. It doesn't look like it's enough to us. It looks to me, looks to us and the team, that, that the, the person, and of course, a lot of this has been overshadowed by the lack of having the Director of Transportation there, so we had to kind of take that into account. But the person that's doing all of the cost clerk slash TMS work is way overloaded. Her statements to us were that she, she works extra hours and doesn't take a lunch and, you know, is basically, doesn't feel like she can miss. She, she got herself certified to be able to drive the fuel truck to help out when it had to be done. And I've already spoken about the mechanics as far as they're, they're overloaded. We have a few recommendations involved on the, on the page three of this report. It's been previously noted that need to move ahead immediately with the hiring the Director. The district should split the TMS slash cost clerk administrative position into two positions. We're going to be talking more about a deficit that we have in the whole TMS role that we're going to need to focus on more. But, but in this district, that's, it's just totally has been overloaded to a point that not, I want to be sure that, that we're not speaking of the person as much as the situation, but reports aren't making it to DPI on time. There's, there's a lot of things that just can't get done. And, and the other thing that we're, we are concerned about is a lot of the responsibility the Transportation Department has migrated out to the schools. There are a lot of things that the Transportation Department is supposed to do is being handled by principals, assistant principals, people that are working out in the schools are taking on some of those roles. But we feel like that that should be split, and that would, that would add another position to the Transportation Department. There may also be a need to add a mechanic one position, whose primary responsibilities would include running the fuel truck, typically in school transportation departments, that's the entry-level mechanics position. Consideration should be given for implementing a process that offers feedback to each employee on areas they perform well and specific areas where they can improve. We were looking for evaluations, and we were not able to see evaluations. And when we spoke to the employees about it, they were, they were in favor of getting evaluations. And we recommend that Transportation Administration monitor and track training requirements for each person on staff, including the Director, and identify opportunities to obtain appropriate training. This will require long-range planning to identify budgeting and scheduling requirements. We, we could find that in many areas, there's just no time for them to leave the job to go receive training, and there's too many things changing in the transportation world on a regular basis. It's something that you can't miss. So I want to keep moving, but I'll let Rodney talk a little bit about our next topic, which is school bus driver contract management.
So under the school bus driver contract management piece, I think right now it's been done here at the central office with Dr. Klor, and it might be because of the absence of a Director. As a Director in Surry County, that's one thing that I do. It determines an employee's employment status along with their holiday pay, and then also time that they can earn off to take off sometime later. It's a critical piece. It's also a critical piece to the budget in that you know exactly what you think that route should be based off the planned route that should be done by the TMS person in that office instead of school personnel. And then you can match that up later on with GPS. And right now, I think we're going through a transition here with really a lack of GPS because we're kind of waiting on a new contract here. It's something that's being weighed right now, which company to go with, and do we wait till July? But I kind of weigh those two, and it's a critical piece to help with the funding base also.
Thank you. The, the dual role, what's happened in Alexander County Schools where we now, we, with school bus coverage, everybody gets a CDL driver's license as a classified employee, and so custodians, food service workers, teacher assistants out in the schools are making bus runs, and that's, that's keeping you going. But from a school bus driver management perspective, it gets a little more complicated when we start looking at what do their contracts look like? And if, we recognize this is a solution that you had to come up with, you had to be able to keep the bus routes going. The bold recommendation at the bottom of that piece is once GPS capabilities are restored, and we're going to talk a little more about that, we recommend all bus drivers be required to use the onboard software to sign in and out at the beginning of each run. We also recommend the Director and the TMS Coordinator monitor routes and drivers' time in accordance with the driver contracts. It's a place you need to get back to. It's the largest line item in your transportation budget. It's the one that an administrator has to be looking at and saying, are we, are we, are we sticking to the, you know, what we know for efficiency on these bus runs? It takes me talking about school bus routing. And what, what's happened is that the state has a software program that's used that is required to be used at every school transportation department that, that has, has been worked through the years to develop the routes based on criteria that, that is beyond what we would just ask somebody to go out and say, here's, here's the address, is go figure out the best way to get, get around to all of them. Yet that's what, we, we have variations of that. What has happened is that the person that is employed to operate TMS has not received the training that's required, had just very limited training in TMS. And over a period of time, since the last TMS operator, the routes weren't getting out to the schools in time, and they weren't, they weren't good routes. Instead, there was a lot of feedback coming from your bus drivers and your principals and your assistant principals that were having to redo all these routes. And what evolved is that because it's a requirement for the state to have the routes in the TMS system, we're getting routes from out in the schools. They develop their own system that they do on Google Docs and, and share it in Google folders or whatever. And it's a nice system, but, but their, their assistant principals and their people that really have something else that they should be paying more attention to, they should be getting their routes from the Transportation Department. And so we're making a very strong recommendation that arrangements should be made for the TMS Coordinator to receive intensive training, which is offered across the state, very, very specific training on using this very complex program, to receive intensive training in the use of the TMS software and to properly prepare bus routes throughout the district. This will be impacted by current staffing issues, which we mentioned a while ago, and we think that you probably need to split your TMS and your cost clerk assignment.
Andy, is that training what we talked about being offered at UNC Charlotte?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It's, it's training down there that you can schedule at any time. Most of the time, they, they prefer more than just a few people. So, but knowing the situation, I think they would work with you down there. And also with the state conferences, we always have, it's an extensive amount of training during that one week.
And when is that state conference?
I think it's June 23 through the 27, or is it 16 through the 20?
But it's in June?
It's in June.
Okay, I can look that up.
June 19 through the 22nd.
I was in the ballpark.
In Wilmington this year.
And that conference, no one asked, I'll go back a little bit, you mentioned something about even the mechanic training.
Yes.
That conference is not just for directors and TMS coordinators, is it?
No, it is not.
So every employee, because I know, I, I used to be in the maintenance facility, same lot, it's very familiar, everybody offered in summertime training that was available to keep up with standard practices, state requirements and stuff like that. And that's what I was, when you was talking about that, I was wondering if, is that something we could do during summer?
You could. What, what we did in Surry is we rotated the guys. And of course, what Darren and him have faced the last year or so is when you're down to just three people, it's been very difficult to get away because you've got to get these buses prepared and ready for.
And a lot of that has been down to two people doing it all.
Yes. And so it's very difficult to get away, but the training there, it's, from what I've heard, it's, it's one of the best conferences in the entire nation, and at least one mechanic needs to go every year. Thank you.
It, it's even a little more than that. They, in order to conduct the 30-day inspections for school buses and the Transportation Department, you have to be certified, and then you have to renew that certification on a, on an annual basis. So then you really have to do it in one way or another. So I'm going to, I'm going to move to vehicles. There's not a lot in our report about the condition of the vehicles because they're in pretty darn good condition. It was, we were, we were impressed with how good the job they're doing of maintaining them. There were, there were certain things that we would see anywhere. You know, they only get really a, a, a good cleanup once a year, and about halfway through the year, they, they start showing, you know, on the inside and outside. And it's, one of our recommendations, deeper down in the report, that you come up with a system for maybe cleaning the buses in a systematic way more often. We wanted to talk about technology on the buses because there's a big movement in the country and certainly in this state for, for smart bus. It refers to several things that, technology-wise, that are becoming not just something that would be a pilot study or something that would be interesting to try out, they are becoming regular required equipment on school buses. The, from, the, from the level of GPS, it, it's going to get to a point to operate inside of this system. You, you just have to have GPS. And what happened to you here was that you have GPS installed on every bus, but the contract with it was with a company called Synovia. And the, it happened to a lot of people, but they, when they switched from 3G to 4G, your, your equipment quit working. If it, if it did quit altogether, it quit working well.
But I'll clarify that at that time, you guys were in a month-to-month contract, just like Surry County. I believe Caldwell, Alexander, and Surry, about eight years ago entered into the contract at the same time. But the good news is, even though it quit working, you weren't paid for it.
Right. So, but, but your ability to have, even especially with the dual role, when, when a, when a school employee comes out to, to become a bus driver, they have to go into your payroll system, something called timekeeper, where they, they change that role and they're, they become a bus driver. Well, that, that movement from the building to the bus, and then later from the bus back to timekeeping is, creates some difficulties. I think Dr. Klor said from an A R payroll perspective, it creates a lot of difficulties sometimes in how, how they're using that system. But we really depend on that GPS system to say, you just clocked in, and there's an allotted amount of time that you have for your pre-check before that bus rolls. And GPS knows from the time you checked in to the time the bus started rolling. And then the same thing's on the other side of the route. If you, if you drove that TMS-developed route, we can overlay and see, yep, you're right on it. It's taking longer than we thought it would, or you're getting through there faster than we thought you would, or whatever. And then when you return to the school, you've got an allotted amount of time to do your post-check and the cleanup of the bus. And you can see all of that and record all of that and manage all of that through that GPS system, along with a whole lot of other stuff. So you have, in our recommendation, we highly recommend moving forward with, and I, I said the Cal-Amp-Synovia software, that's their new, longer name, agreement, or a comparable system. Because in some of our discussions with staff, it may be time to look at, at other, other systems that might be, work out better for you. But to do it as quickly as possible, as the capabilities are intricately connected to other program improvement strategies, particularly as it relates to TMS routing, management of bus driver contracts. Very quickly, stop-arm cameras. The, the state will, will guarantee you two, they're $3,000 a unit. They'll guarantee you two a year, and you can ask for up to 10, and preference has been given to districts that have less stop-arm camera systems. It's huge for your bus safety program. If, if it's properly used and you're collecting that data and you're cooperating with law enforcement, you're, the impact that it has on, one, probably the worst traffic hazard out there with school buses is people passing stopar. And you can give that information to law enforcement, and they can deal with it from there, and it has a, a big impact on that issue, not only just for the district, but in a much broader concern. You're not making use of that. It's, the notices are coming, but as things that we've already talked about, they're just not getting responded to. Something that we, we recommend that you move into.
And it will also help the student discipline on the bus, too. I know we have a principal in the room and having cameras sometimes on board, he's the iron sky.
The, the, the next piece on this is finance. It's, it's, it's big because, and we, we want to be careful, we don't try to get into a, we could talk for hours on this, and it, and it's probably going to be difficult to see those slides up and see from here, it's just going to look like some. That, that, the one that you were just on, the smallest one there, was, was what your, what your allotments are each year from the state. Because as you all know, the, the state gives you an annual allotment to run your, your transportation system, but it's only the part of transporting the students. And then you have to make, you have to also pitch in local dollars. And there's, you know, the, the one slide, I'm just not even trying to imagine jumping to any of that. But, you know, you've gone from the 2019, 2020 school year, from a net allotment from the state of $1,060,000. The next year, they changed all of their rules because of the pandemic, and so you were stuck with something we're talking about at the moment, your efficiency rating. And so it, it, it only went up $7,000, went to $1,067,000. Last year, it went to $1,114,000. And, and then I think you've heard just in the last day or two, that theirs is going to be somewhere in that 1.2, somewhere in, in that neighborhood. There are two things that affect this allotment in a huge way. One of them is that, and, and you'll have information that you can see this, but they, you get this year's allotment based off of what you had last year, plus. plus, let me try to say it right, local eligible funds. Eligible local funds that you spent this year get added to your state allotment next year. So if you did a good job of spending money to get more money, you bought the sort of things that were eligible with your local funds, and then that gets added on to your state fund, your state allotment, in the following year. There's a lot of other things that affect it. But it's a tricky thing to do that without a director of transportation that's working straight with the transportation department to understand what's going on. And we have a comparative analysis inside of our report. And there's a slide on it, you have no chance of being able to see. But just comparing your state allotment of the $1.2 million that was the 20, I think it's actually the 2019-20 school year, but I'm not sure. But comparing that to Ash County, same number of buses. Yours is 1.2, theirs is 1.8, 1.872. Looking at Watauga's, 1.3, Macon, 1.5. A lot of districts that are similar in size to Alexandria County and, you know, west of I-77, we try to stay in the same region, have much higher state allotments than you do because year after year, they've been putting in eligible local funds and buying things that were necessary that they were going to have to pitch in for, but then it got added to their allotment. There's one other piece of this that I want to mention. They also have an efficiency rating that districts are awarded based on a lot of different factors. And, you know, it's sort of a reward-for-compliance kind of system. So if you're doing, you know, the biggest one is if you can park buses. If you're more efficient with those TMS routes and have less buses on the road, they reward you for it with your efficiency score. And what that efficiency score is in this situation is yours, the last one you had was at 85% when the state average was 91%. And what that basically does is they take your, after they figure out everything else on your allotment, they multiply it times 85%, and that comes off. So, you know, one of the calculations that we showed in the report was that the last time that happened, it took $175,000 off of your allotment because of where your efficiency score is at. So it, once again, can't do it without a director of transportation. You've got to have somebody that's in tune down to what's bringing ours down and what can we do to get it back up and to build our allotment higher. So that is about as simple as I can make a very complex piece. Would you like to add anything?
Well, and Miss Myatt, you can chime in. But it's, the financial budget that you're given by the state to operate yellow buses, it's a moving target. It's very difficult to control some aspects, driver time, fuel prices. But overall, you've got to watch this stuff. And the efficiency rating is a key piece to that. And one of the things that we really look at in Surry are the number of buses, the number of students riding. And I know back when Alexander combined middle and elementary, I think they trimmed eight buses. That pretty much was done at the school level at that time, which I applaud them for doing that. And I think you'll see your efficiency rating go up because of that. Because I think you guys have been trapped, as we have been told by DPI, you're being held harmless. I think now the efficiency rating is coming back into play. And I'm assuming, I don't have all the data, but I'm assuming, yours is, it'll probably come up, that you can keep more of that funding base than what you've been keeping.
Just have, you know, you've gone from 51 buses three years ago to 43 now as a result of combining those routes.
And it's not because that the transportation department can't do it. It's just, they just got to keep those buses rolling with three people. We've even told that Revanda's getting in the fuel truck. It was very difficult to try to create purchase orders, find parts, and then also do TMS. But they're doing all they can do over there.
How's it that the district's operating at an 85% efficiency rating when 25% of the vehicles have been taken off the road?
Well, it's, so your funding for this school year is based off last year's data. And we're kind of still stuck in the 18-19 data. And I don't know that those number of vehicles, I think, for Surry County, for instance, we're still showing that we're operating around 95 buses every day. In essence, we're only operating 84. So you're always a year ahead of what you're actually doing compared to what you've been allotted. It's a very complex formula to understand, but most of us don't.
And efficiency rating is way more than how many buses you're running.
It is. There's so many other factors involved. The type of topography, you know, it's the rural areas, get an extra 10%. So even though you're at 85%, they'll give you 10% because you're rural, because you're actually driving more than you're actually picking students up. It's hard to get a full busload of students here in Alexander County.
And I want to be sure it's clear, when the last time you had an assigned efficiency rating was when you had 51 buses on the road. It would have been, if you had have gotten credit for having taken that many buses off of the road, your efficiency rating would likely have gone up. We think, once they put it back into play again, if you're still with your combined routes, you're probably, you'll be at 43 buses possibly, you'll get credit for that. You just, you got stuck for two years in the pandemic because they didn't, they just, as you said, they held you harmless? Or hostage one of the two. Facilities. Last piece that we want to talk about, and we can open up for questions. But we really want to talk about the bus garage in respect that. It's a very old bus garage. It shares a site with maintenance, with Mr. Campbell. The facilities have exceeded their design life. They're what they were designed to do many years ago for 48-passenger buses versus 72-passenger buses that just barely can fit in there with both doors down. It's much different. What regulations from fire code, from building code, from environmental, Department of Environmental Health and Natural Resources inspections and OSHA inspections have changed dramatically over those years. And that facility will have a very difficult time. Its grandfather under a lot of building code and that type of thing. But as time goes forward, you're not going to be able to do much over there without meeting current codes. And that's going to mean doing some very major changes to it. Also extremely crowded. There's no, the director's office is a notch in the hallway. It's a very, very small six-by-six area. The room where the TMS coordinator works is the largest room there, but it's not really a front entrance of the building. It's kind of like a side piece. Darren works as the assistant director on a table that's set up in the parts room. There's no room there. It's not efficient. You can't get from one, from a tire shop to buses that, you can't really even, when the buses are in there, there's the distance between the wall and the bus is so narrow that you have to back the bus out and turn it around and bring it in the other way. So it's, we use the word substandard in our report, and we feel like we can back that up. We feel that there are many things that you need to do, some right away. One, I applaud staff's efforts. During the assessment, we said you really need to get an OSHA inspection by request to lock in to not being fined for some of the things that existed. You can do that. Had some great advice from my partner here that said, yeah, before you do that, why don't you call your insurance people, they can come out before OSHA does, and they'll do a thorough inspection, which you did that day. I think they came a couple of days later.
Yes.
I know they issued a report.
Yes.
And I'm understanding that many things have been corrected.
Yes.
On that.
Yes.
So it is something that you needed to look at pretty quickly, and we appreciate you doing that. There's the mechanic that was injured, was injured as a result of a door, a roll-up door that he was trying to repair. And we don't know all the details, but we know that he was injured as a result of the door falling and had a severe injury. Those doors have exceeded their design life. They no longer can be trusted to function properly without having to do some extra steps to raise them and lower them. There are lifts that you lift up school buses on there that are no longer capable of doing that job properly. And there's some talks about making some modifications to them. There's one thing that really concerned us, that there's a fuel storage and fuel dispensing area behind the bus garage where all of the diesel and gasoline is stored. Just looking at it makes you wonder if everything's okay. But we did, we didn't do a full assessment, but we did understand from staff that there are problems with the secondary containment. If one of those tanks were to breach, you know, by law, that's supposed to be collected by a secondary containment that is not likely to work, which would be a big issue if that were to happen. And given the condition of the tanks, we would say that that's something that needs to be dealt with very soon. The pump for those tanks is outdated. And I think during the assessment, we heard that it had failed and that Joe needed to do something special about it. Our recommendations are, we've already mentioned the voluntary inspection for safety and health. The broken roll-up door, we are told that it's, that Mr. Campbell is making preparations to have not only that door, but some of the other doors replaced, which we think is a good idea. Immediate action should be taken to address concerns related to the integrity of the fuel tank, foundation blocks, and secondary containment.
That's already happening.
Good. And so the others kind of fit to that. District should solicit design proposals for replacement of the existing fuel storage and dispensing equipment to be considered in upcoming capital outlay expenditures. Contingency plans should be made on dealing with that system not working and needing to fuel buses every day. And I suspect you've probably already done that. And then kind of, it's a natural thing to happen. And, but the maintenance department and the transportation department are on the same site, so it's not any real need to put in a work order. They just tell each other out in the parking lot that we need to have, you look at something and fix it. It hurts the transportation department in the long run because if you're going to need to make a case for capital outlay items like roll-up doors and fuel tanks and that type of thing, it's got to be showing that we've gotten close on this, we've been asking for this, we just haven't been able to get to it. And then at some point in time, you need to bring that forward and say, we're past a point on this now. So we strongly advise.
And by the way, I would just like to say that those things have not happened. No work orders have been placed to address those issues.
We're, and sort of lay on top of that, you've got schools that make capital outlay requests. We want to pay a parking lot. We want you to fix a roof. We need the lockers replaced in the dressing room. And you take that information, you get quotes, and you put together a capital outlay budget each year. You get zero coming from the transportation department. Your chief finance officer says, I don't ever get any requests for any capital outlay at the transportation department. You need to change that. It needs to be, these things need to be on record, these doors and these items. And then we didn't look at HVAC, ventilation, roof, a lot of items that may need a serious look. So, a closing piece of this. We basically are recommending that you start considering a replacement for your bus garage. That you start, it takes some time to do that. Our recommendation is, we recommend that Alexander County schools conduct a feasibility analysis for a new transportation facility to be constructed within the next five years. The study should include site selection, which you have an advantage. You actually have a couple of sites that you might consider beyond just a replacement onsite. That is always a possibility. Should include a comprehensive analysis of the existing facilities because you're going to sell it. You have to sell this to come up with funding, why we need it. Data collection for existing space utilization, building code analysis, programming. And then conceptual design recommendations, budgeting, and construction planning. Because at some point, you've got to be able to say, here's what we think we want to do. We have provided information to the district on the last six new bus garages built in North Carolina. We, to the degree that we could, we showed how much they had to pay for them. I think the one that looked most accurate to us was in 2008, Cabarrus County, got a new bus garage, and they spent 2.8 million for it. I'm going to tell you that that price has gone up. I talked to the architect for that one and the new Union bus garage that opened up two years ago. And he's now, he has two bus garages in Charlotte-Matt, out for bid. They have a big bus garage and they have satellites now. Their satellites are comparable to your 50-bus garage. And so one of them is coming in at, and I can give you the actual details on it if you need it, but one's coming in at 8.5 million and the other one's coming at 9.2. And this is a bus garage.
And how, Andy, are they funding those facilities?
Every, everything that I can see has been funded through general obligation bonds. The districts have had bond referendums. Union brought theirs around once, it got shaved off, and then it came back in 10 years and they put it on for sure. I've known this, but I did some research because you asked me to, to see if I could find any state funding. And at this point, I didn't find any. Chatham did one interesting thing. Chatham County's new garage was built in concert with the county commissioners to have a dual garage for county vehicles and.
And school system.
And, you know, they were able to work that out. It's, in our opinion, you know, I said within five years, the price is going to keep going up. That bus garage, if, like, we had conversations about, could you just build a new fuel, storage, distribution place on maybe a site where you eventually would build a bus garage? And I mean, you're going to, you're getting upwards of $900,000 or $800,000 probably to do just that. And it would be a little crazy unless you knew that you were going to stay on that site to build it there. You know, so I think there's a lot of planning that you need to initiate. And it takes to do the feasibility study, to start making plans as a board. And I built, I had, in Guilford County, I had a $457 million bond referendum. The time it takes to get through feasibility, to get it designed, and to get it built and move into it comes around about five years, you know, if you can be that lucky. With that, I think I went more than my 15 minutes. I apologize. But I swore to God, I said, watch me, I'll be, I'll have it done in 15 minutes. We'd like to open up for questions if there are any.
So you didn't find, when you went to look for the buses, you didn't find any red flags going up on safety-wise? I want to be clear on that. When you went to the high school and you looked?
I think we can safely say that. I'll let you.
Well, we did look at the high school buses. They all looked clean. We also went through the last three or four years of the inspection reports that the state comes around and does annually. And the score here is very comparable, close to the average. It is going up. So, and I think that's because of the lack of employees that they've had to deal with here in the last couple of years. But. here in the last couple of years, but even though it's gone up, it's still within range of being a safe operation.
And that, and that state inspection comes around, this is different technology, so everybody's clear. That's every year.
Every year.
Employees are doing 30-day inspections, which, you know, you said with the lack of employees, they're keeping up with them, but it is a burden.
Right.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that, because that safety, I knew that school bus safety, that used to be, you know, I remember when them inspectors, I remember back in the day when they'd show up. I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a yearly, and the mechanics are doing a 30-day, and they're giving that bus a thorough overview over 30 days. Okay. I, I just, I mean, because you know, you hear this about the facility, you hear it about finances, but I want to be clear, you stated that, you know, you looked and you was very complimentary of our guys, and they take a lot of pride in work. Knowing the two that are there currently, I know them well, they take a lot of pride in what they do. And I just want to be clear on the safety aspect, that you-
Safety aspect, we didn't see anything. Again, we did inspect the buses like DPI does when they come in, but just the visual inspection, we saw plenty of tread on the tires. We did drive one to check the brakes or the steering, but based off what I saw, the drivers are keeping them clean for the most part, and then they look good, they really look good.
And that, and that, you're familiar with that state inspection, just so folks know, that state inspection, that's very, they pick a bus and they drive it and they pull it to the garage, yeah, they pull it in the garage, put it up on lifting, look at it, won't they? Just so everybody knows that, you know, I want, I want to be, you know, it is a lot of information, it's a good report. And I just want to be clear, you know, I don't want somebody to think safety's been compromised, you know, because those guys take pride in what they do.
The way that this assessment was done, is you go in, you look at everything, and then you start drawing down for your areas and so on. This whole report could have been about the, you know, your maintenance on your school vehicle or on your bus. We didn't have to devote a lot of time to it. I think that says-
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
I have a great spot that I think that we need to be considering for a new site. I think that we should discuss in a future meeting, the demolition of Old Wittenburg Elementary School, and make that the area for the new transportation department.
Okay.
And I've actually looked at that property a lot, you know?
Don't you think it's ideal?
I think it's a good one to be considering.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you all for-
Thanks so much. Thanks so much. Safe travels.
At this time, I will recognize Ms. Amy Daigle, Principal Boy at Hidnite Elementary School for our update.
Well, I was gonna try to be short, but now I'm gonna try to be extra, extra short. Good evening, board members, Chairman Robinson, Vice Chair Arquayes, did I say that correctly? Thank you. And Dr. Hefner, I am honored to be here tonight to present some updates on behalf of Hidnite Elementary School. You may be wondering about the football on the screen, it is not, because Super Bowl was last night, although that is perfect timing for our theme as it relates to the year. If you'll go to the next slide, please. So, we decided that we needed to be very clear on our mission for the year and the goals that we, as a school improvement team, had set for Hidnite Elementary School. And to do that, we thought we needed a memorable theme and actions, and so that is what you're looking at there. We did a football theme, and these are our three big plays. We decided that we would focus on culture core and communication at the heart of the school improvement that our data said we needed. I won't read each of those to you, but there's just a, and they certainly don't represent all of the things that we're doing to address culture core and communication in the schools, but that is a good example or summation of the things that we're doing. Basically, focusing on those three things allows us to move towards our specific school goals and indicators as they're outlined in our school improvement plan. And ultimately, one of, we have four main goals. The first one is to improve classroom management and overall student behavior. We also want to increase math and reading proficiency and growth for all groups, including our special subgroups. We also wanted to recruit and retain a high-quality staff, and we also wanted to improve community engagement within the school. So, what I'd like to do in the next couple of slides is highlight a few of the things that we're doing to tackle those goals. So, the first slide that you have here is for classroom management and behavior. I could completely inundate you with pictures, and I would love to, but to be honest, you could go back and follow our social media and more on that later to see some of these things, but I highlighted a few of them. First of all, we have been explicitly teaching our positive behavior interventions and support matrix, so you often hear that as PBIS. So, when I say explicitly teaching it, I mean each classroom is explicitly going over what the expectations are in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeteria. And it's also something that we're explicitly covering through some pep rallies, which again, you can see highlighted on our social media. Our school counselors have done a fantastic job making sure that we have everything to go, and I say that, that's an entire team approach to redesigning the images on the PBIS matrix, to getting the posters made, to the teachers, putting them in their opening sessions, and making sure that parents are informed with it as well. What you see there on our top row, though, is something we are very proud of, and that is our school store. So, Ms. Wegant's class, actually, as a piece of inclusion manages our PBIS store. It works a bit like Amazon, and our building, our students love it. We do work with ClassDojo, they have points, they can lose points, it's their currency, and serves as our core behavior target there. So, when students do earn those points each week, they have an opportunity to spend them. They sit down with their teacher, which is a relationship building in itself. They get to decide if they want to spend their points, save their points, you can imagine there's a lot of lessons there to be had, and we do have a lot of students that save for some of our bigger items. But in doing so, Ms. Wegant and her team manage all the orders for that store, as well as the ordering for the store items with Ms. Sweet in the office. So, they do a great job managing that. The students love to see them come around and deliver them in bags, and it really does work a bit like Amazon.
Does it have a catchy little name? When we were at Stony Point, we were able to see the Pall Mart.
I love it. That is actually on our, that's actually something we were talking about, it's a play on Phantoms and Heroes and Amazon, so we've got updates on that coming.
I can't wait to hear.
A lot of creative teachers will come up with something, I'm sure. The next line that you see there, pictures represents our piece to making classrooms more engaging. Naturally, you engage the students more, you decrease negative behaviors. And so, a couple of those things I highlighted, again, I could highlight a ton, but right there, you see the picture of our new 3D printer, as well as Mr. Dagenhart's music class with their new bells. There's a lot of other things. We were just awarded a grant for Merge Cubes that started, they started working with this week, so a lot of fun technology going on, and we appreciate the help with Ms. Esposito and working with Ms. Cantor, our new media specialist there, to get some of those things going. The last line, and again, tons and tons of pictures of this online, but is increasing student leadership opportunities. Again, they take pride in the school itself, and you see a decrease in behavior and/or negative behaviors, I should say. The Student Ambassador Program is run by our school counselors, and they've done a great job. Students in fourth and fifth apply to be a student ambassador. It's a huge process, a lot that they take into consideration there. The students can then be assigned to members of the Student Advisory Council that meets with me once a month. It could be that they're assigned to a grounds team where they're working on beautification projects. There's just a lot of different ways that they can be utilized as student ambassadors, and we're seeing great success with that. So, the updates for increasing our growth and proficiency is by far the one I have the most updates on. Again, I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible here. So, we are certainly focusing on core instruction with OG Hegarty Engage New York, as well as Learning Focus Schools. So, those are things that you're seeing in all of our schools as a part of our core curriculum with Dr. Curry based here out of the central office, but we're seeing great success with it now that we are seeing more of that done to Fidelity. So, a lot of exciting things happening with that. I'm very grateful for Ms. Buff, our co-curriculum coach, as she is a vital piece to making sure that we are doing that, and that she serves as a fantastic resource for our staff. I think you could ask any of them, and they would tell you that they appreciate all the insight that she gives. The other thing we're doing is managing our Title I budget to maintain a reading specialist who we have Ms. Christie Kraus sitting in that position this year. Ms. Buff actually moved from that one into the coach last year, so they've got a lot of partnerships going and are doing a great job with making sure that we are really targeting those early literacy strategies, particularly with the fact that we have a lot of beginning teachers. So, that in combination with the partnership that we have with ASU for professional mentoring for all of our beginning teachers has been a huge asset for us. We're also utilizing federal ESAR funds to hire certified instructional support interventionists there. We have two of them there. Ms. Paige Gleed on the end is our general interventionist, working primarily with early literacy interventions. And then, we have Mr. Hefner, Alexander County Schools retired teacher, who serves as our math interventionist. We do have a general interventionist position open. In fact, I have proposed someone to the board to consider for that position today, actually. We also have active and engaging PLCs. Again, super thankful for Ms. Buff partnering with myself to do and make sure that we lead those in a positive way. We are working with a process called See It, Name It, Do It right now, where we're really drilling down specifically into seeing the skill that the student needs to work on, naming it out loud, naming the specifics of that, and then coming up with a plan to problem solve to how to do it. And in a school as big as Hidnite, that can be more challenging than it sounds, but I will tell you, I have been above and beyond impressed with what the staff has been able to come up with on the things when they were able to really dig into the see it and name it, and they came prepared to talk about problem-solving solutions for the do it part. You'll see a lot of data if you zoom in there. We're attracted, obviously, some student names, but we've done a lot of dives for our mid-year. Again, you guys can zoom in on that when you have an opportunity, but we have really narrowed in on our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners, being a TSI, low-performing school, that is a significant part to our improvement, and we are already seeing some great strides with that. All of our EC teachers and our MLL teacher quadrant maps, just like any other grade-level teacher did for their students, and I think it's been very eye-opening to look at all of that data. So, again, just a few ways that we're targeting that goal, I could go on all night on that particular goal. Okay, our next one, recruitment and retention. You're probably already familiar that we're sitting on roughly 50% new staff at Hidnite. In fact, we have nine beginning teachers in our building, five of which are beginning teacher ones. So, when I was talking about the funding for the ASU professional mentors, that's what a lot of that money's going for, is to make sure that they have the support they need that's non-evaluative. Then, we also have really active support by Ms. Jenkins, the assistant principal, and myself in the classrooms, as well as Ms. Buff, and of course, our interventionists, being that they are certified retired teachers, have been a great asset for us as well. We also, of course, have our building-level mentors, and we appreciate the efforts that Alexander County, as a district, has done to support mentors and helping give them some extra financial support to benefit being a mentor to those beginning teachers. Also, we have an extremely transparent and democratic process with our school improvement team as it comes to that goal for recruitment and retention. I think that that is helping significantly. We also created an adult learning space, which is what you see in the other picture on that slide. I'm sorry, yep, there we go. That, I think, has proven to be beneficial for the staff to say, this is where I'm gonna go, this is where we're gonna learn, and it's an important part of that. And then, also, we have a customer service team that is devoted to community, staff, and student experiences. Again, you can see all over our social media the things that they do for students and staff, and if you call over to Hidnite Elementary, I think you'll know as a community member, what kind of customer service we're working on over there. So, for our last goal, the improving community engagement there, obviously, this is, these are all very measurable goals, and one of the things that we're very proud of is increased attendance at reading and math night. We have done a lot of themed approach to that this year, so reading night was a camping night, and math night was focused on careers that deal with measurement and data. So, you hear a lot of parents say, oh, my gosh, I don't understand this new math, and I get that, so we thought if we gave it a real application to careers, that it would benefit the parents, and we got some great feedback on that. Also, opportunities for our students to shine. With COVID, we've obviously been missing that, every school has, so we've really tried to step that up. The Winter Wonderland Concert was highly attended, so much so that we did have to make some contingencies not to go over the fire code allowable limit there, but we did it.
At the auditorium, I might add.
Yes, yes, we packed it out, and we're very proud of that. We also have a care closet, a clothes closet, and a food pantry that our wonderful counselors and social worker manage, and that's huge. If I could tell you, and we do have some statistics I shared in my mid-year review with Dr. Hefner, but if you only knew how many students come to them every morning to brush their teeth, or comb their hair, or braid their hair, or whatever case it might be, and that's just the care closet, the clothes closet, the coats, the shoes, that we're making sure kids are properly dressed for the weather, and then also the food pantry. We're super appreciative of the Rotary Club and the food bags that they send to go home with our students, but there are more students receiving bags than we get from the Rotary Club, and so it takes a lot of work on behalf of our social worker to make sure that that stays filled. So, a lot of great things there, and then, of course, our social media presence is huge. If you haven't taken a look at our Facebook page, you probably should. I put on there our hashtags so that if you want a quick search, it should pull up under all those. We have also recently added "North Carolina Portrait of a Graduate" as one of our hashtags because we are focused on those things from Superintendent Truitt. Last, but certainly not least, is a huge thank you. A huge thank you to the staff, a huge thank you to the board, and to our community partners. We would not be able to do half of what we're doing this year had it not been for the generous donations and things that are happening there, either with grant money, or of course, the Taylor's Well Apple Festival benevolence fund donation is huge. And then, I also want to point out, there is a lot of churches there who have been feeding our staff every single PD day this year, so much so, actually, that there's a little bit of a competition because we didn't have enough PD days compared to how many churches wanted to volunteer. So, I would say that that's a huge success there. Also, the donations for the furniture in our PLC rooms, I know there are other schools that have been recipients of that from Huntington House, but I want to make sure I put that out there because it's very nice furniture, and it does certainly change the atmosphere when the staff goes in to do their professional learning. And then, of course, we had the Christmas donations, and we've also had significant contributions to our student lunch debts. So, I am just extremely thankful for everyone involved for helping Hidnite be successful. That was in a nutshell, I tried to be super quick there, I may not be as quick as I need to, but-
Great. Questions?
Any questions?
Thanks for everything you're doing. I do see a lot of your social media stuff, you've got a lot of interest things going, you do have a lot of new staff. It's great to see all the community partnerships, all the opportunities where you got the parents involved, your 3D printed items you've shared with us is in my office and used.
Ms. Williams, we're excited to design that for you all.
Yep. Thank you for everything you're doing.
I just want to say two big pieces of my heart, attend Hidnite, and how Principal Daigle is here tonight presenting is just how you will find her every day of the week. The energy level is contagious. It is contagious. She has truly hit the ground running, and I could not be more proud to have my children be Hidnite Phantoms. Thank you, Ms. Daigle.
That's a huge compliment, thank you. One last note, I apologize for stepping out. Several of you already know that I am in Dr. Roll School, and we have class on Monday night, so I was in it in another room, came in here to present, and now I'm going back to it, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Ms. Crystal Hoak, our Director of Career and Technical Education and Secretary of Curriculum, for our CTE update.
Running late, so I'm gonna try to be quick. Also, thank you, board members and Dr. Hefner, for allowing me to present tonight. February is National CTE Month, so very pleased to showcase just some of the things that are going on in CTE and Alexander County Schools. And you'll see our vision of their careers for all, no matter what students' plans are for after graduation, our vision is to help prepare students for their goals. I want to point out, CTE is not just for students who are not going to college. CT is for students who want to go to the workforce right after high school. It's for students who want to attend trade school, two-year school, or four-year school. I know that used to be the perception that you either went college career or college pathway or career, and that's just not the case anymore. There are a lot of honors courses that are available in career and technical education, so I just want to point that out as well. And we do have programs at those three schools, our two middle schools, East and West, and Alexander Central High School. Next slide. We're just gonna kind of go through that one. That is the leadership, and we are housed over at the high school. Next slide. I want to spend a little time here, though. This CTE program does have a great reputation across the state, and so I want to point out and just- to point out and just thank the uh career and technical education staff. Um, we have five program areas, agriculture, business, uh family consumer science, health science, trades. So those are our five program areas, and then, of course, um, we have two teachers at East and West Middle School. So again, on your board docs, um, you had a kind of a flyer that will go through all the classes that are offered in those program areas, so I didn't want to spend more time on that. Um, but again, these these staff just do a tremendous job with all the offerings that we have. Um, and this actually um showcases each of the five program areas. Um, and so hopefully, when you look at those images, what you see is hands-on and real life. These classes do align with labor market needs and hopefully provide students with technical employability skills, academic skills, to help them be successful in whatever that career pathway. Next slide, and this is actually a video. It's just a glimpse into a a CTE student's day at the high school.
Since we're using PowerPoint to code.
So again, just a glimpse into those five program areas. Um, I do want to share a couple of our new programs, highlight those. So, um, we do have Paxton Patterson College and Career Labs in our middle school. Um, hopefully, when you uh get the opportunity to visit East and West, you've had seen those. We have one lab in both middle schools. Um, that is not, is not necessarily a new program, but we have been able to add to those programs, especially with some grant funding uh the last year, actually. And so what we've really tried to do is align the the uh labs that they have in middle school to our CTE courses. So on there, on the left, you'll see home maintenance. Uh, in the middle, we have Intro to Child Development, and on the right is Nursing uh Fundamentals, which is actually one of our new ones. There's a lot of other um labs that we had. I think we added three last year, uh nursing, uh green construction, energy and power, but they also have, you know, vet medicine, culinary, robotics, design and marketing. So, uh, again, just trying to expose students in middle school to uh career opportunities, but also the pathways that they can choose from high school. Next slide. Um, and I'm sure you guys have uh heard about our FireTech program, very proud of it. This spring, we are actually offering our first uh FireTech three. Um, so these students are getting prepared to be uh competing at skills. Um, again, this year, we've got a group, um, but Chief Deal does a great job with that program. Um, next. A new program also, we are um very proud of our partnership with CBCC. We're now offering what's called CCP Electrical Systems, and so that stands for College and Career Promise. So that is the program where high school students can take college classes tuition-free. So we actually have an instructor who comes into the high school this year, and this is the first time this has ever been done. Um, but we have a CBCC instructor coming to the high school, and you'll see there, he is teaching, uh, and the students are getting two of the four classes that are in the electrical systems pathway. So, um, this is available for juniors and seniors. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to extend that to uh students who can graduate with all four courses. But again, a great partnership um that we've had with CBCC to make that opportunity available. In CCP, we've had the welding classes, so you've probably heard about that, where students go to the Alexander Camp campus for welding. We are hoping to add, and our counselors are working on registration right now, um, but we want to add an engineering pathway as well. So, um, if you haven't seen the Mechatronics Lab um over at the Alexander Campus, um, they have, they got that as a result of a good Golden Leaf Grant, and so our students will be able to use, utilize that as a part of the engineering pathway. Um, so another new program is our Counseling and Mental Health. We're offering for the first time the Level Two. Again, such a huge need for uh social workers, counselors, mental health professionals. So glad to see some students going into that Level Two, um, and they will actually be able to earn a credential, and I forget the name of that, but um hopefully, we'll have good success with that. And then I want to point out that we are also having, for the first time this spring, the Pharmacy Tech class. So Ms. Lauren Long is teaching that in the past, and there was a a picture on there of the students who took it in the fall. We had a hundred percent pass rate for our Nurse Aid Program in the fall, and so that has been a great opportunity for students. But now, as seniors, if they don't want to go the nursing route, or perhaps they have room in their schedule to do both, they can do Pharmacy Tech and actually graduate with that Pharmacy Tech certification. So that, that's a first for us as well. Um, work-based learning internships are nothing new. Um, it is something after COVID, uh, we've had to build up, and Donna Reed has done a great job with that. We've added job shadowing to our work-based learning. I'm proud to say we had our first student complete that, um, and it was very successful. So, uh, again, we've rolled that out to our uh juniors and seniors uh just this second semester, so we've got a list of students still to meet with, but we want to encourage students uh to get that opportunity, six hours, uh actually job shadowing someone in a career field that they're interested in. I won't go through all these numbers, but there's just a lot. I can share this back on social media, and so very proud. Um, last year, uh, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one thousand and sixty-four students who took at least one CTE course out of less than thirteen hundred students. That's pretty good. Um, the duplicate numbers are two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight, which means they took more than one CTE course. Um, so very proud of those numbers. Our state test, eighty-three percent uh in our CTE courses compared to seventy-seven and seventy-two. Um, another number in that middle column, ninety-three point nine percent. Our CTE concentrators, that means our students who take at least that Level Two uh or two courses in a pathway, the graduation rate for students who are concentrators is ninety-three point nine percent compared to the high school graduation rate, which was eighty-one percent. So we know that CTE does benefit students. And then on the right, um, you'll see we're very proud of the credentials. Um, there's some state funding that is set aside specifically for credentials, so we did increase those numbers there. And then on that slide, you'll see a whole host of different credentials that are offered from Nurse Aid, CPR. We saw a picture of the Microsoft Word, um, Hunter's, ADB Quality. So again, we've got certifications available for students, um, that we like to say that goes on those transcripts beyond uh just having that diploma. Um, of course, we want to recognize compute, community partners as well. A recent uh partnership that we had, um, all of the eighth graders, um, they have already had a trip scheduled for the high school, and I seen this Monday, and I was shaking her head because she drove a bus and was with us on these trips. Um, but we, we took it beyond the high school and actually planned a day for them to go out into uh industries as well. So you'll see the list there, uh CEF, Sykes, Aragon, the Sheriff's Department, CBCC, um, they visited AEC as well, and Mitchell Gold Ball, Bob Williams. So all of our eighth graders were able to be in a group and uh go to at least three of those, those places. And of course, the, the goal of that is to make students aware of local industry opportunities. Um, and then another partnership that we've recently had at the high school, um, we've been able to bring these CAT simulators uh to the high school from Western Piedmont Community College. We have a great partnership with them. I was able to go last summer and drive one of these. So these are heavy equipment operation simulators, so um like driving an excavator or a dozer. Um, but we've been able to bring that to the high school probably three or four times with different uh trades classes being able to go in there, and the students love that. So, um, that's a great partnership for us as well. I gave you a whole lot of upcoming events, but there's two that I want to point out. Thursday night, and I think Mr. Lill slipped out, but Thursday night, we are having an elective fair at the high school. There's a parent night for rising ninth graders that will start at five-thirty. Um, and then after that parent night, they will be invited to come down to the elective fair. So it might be good if you come during that first session, but we'd love to invite you to come to the elective fair. Most of the CTE courses have a table in a booth. Our CBCC program partners are gonna be there, uh apprenticeship, uh cohort, as well as some of our trades areas. So again, um, if you're available on Thursday, just to walk through, um, it's a good chance to see uh some of the things that are going in on. It'll be through the lobby, up through the cafeteria. And then the other one I want to point out is March twenty-ninth. You all are invited. I'm sorry, we have a CBCC CTE Advisory Council. We do this uh twice a year. We share our advisory with Alexander Center, and so um our next, next meeting is March twenty-ninth at eleven forty-five. It will be at the Alexander CBCC campus this time, um, and you'll see some of the objectives there, but um we like to give updates uh there as well, and we have some industry partners that come as well, so we're always um always enjoy seeing them. And then I just want to end with a student quote. And so this is Macy Chapman, senior, um, and her growth and leadership has just been outstanding, and I knew this young lady is a student at Ellendale, and so to see her grow, um, and so she says, "I love FFA and ag classes. It has taught me leadership skills, allowed me to meet lots of new people." She even went to national, um, the National FFA Conference. "I've grown so much in the last couple of years. It's because of the competitions and trips and experiences that I have been a part of. I want to be an ag teacher and help future students be a part of something great, and that's what it's about. At the end of the day, it's about making a difference for the individual students and helping them find a pathway."
Questions? Thank you. That credential number, I'll tell you what, that, that, that number jumps out at you. And it just, in case somebody's watching or sitting out here, I mean, you know, the, for instance, like that, uh, OSHA, Office of State Fire Marshal, talking to Chief Deal, I had a conversation one day with him. You know, that was put into place to help Phil avoid, not only for jobs, but our volunteer fire departments. And I was talking to him recently, I said, "Are you seeing uh students get into it?" And he's having students that are signing up for these junior programs, and and that's, that's where CTE is very important. Those credentials, I mean, that's jobs, sometimes now, sometimes now rolling over into college credit for credentials. Uh, so it's, it's very nice to see everything going on in CTE. It's a very.
Well, credential-wise, that, again, there is funds that are allotted that can only be spent towards student credentials, and um, you know, we probably can't spend all the funds for that, but we'll see an increase even this year. We've added AutoCAD in our drafting. Um, and prior years, um, some courses didn't give the credential just because of funding, and so that has been a push from the state superintendent um and state legislator, but um, that, you'll, you'll see it, an increase in credentials across the state in CTE programs, um, but I'm glad we're, we're increasing.
And my son just experienced the Career Tour Day, and he enjoyed it and loved it, and now it's aligning with the February sixteenth. So you did that perfectly. You got, you got him excited about what he needs to do.
You should have gotten a call tonight.
So I did, right? During, during this meeting, so.
I will tell you, one of the gaps that I saw, uh, kind of going back from administration was um just the registration process, that we've really tried to put information out to our students, so.
Doing a good job.
Hopefully, thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the. At this time, I'm gonna recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson in uh in for Ms. Kathy Knapp uh for our Head Startup Day.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be standing in for Ms. Knapp, who could not join us this evening. So she has a few items for the board to review. She has the annual report from twenty-one, twenty-two, which is on the screen. There's also included in your packet the school readiness plan for twenty-twenty-three, and then the in-kind contributions for the program. Do you have any questions pertaining to any of these items?
Questions?
And that is it for me.
Well, as soon as you hear that her new grandbaby has arrived, you must message all of us, okay?
I will. I'm, I've checked a couple of times this evening.
That's where she is. She's at the hospital with her daughter, so.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right? Uh, at this time, I'll recognize Dr. Hefner for our Award of Honor Guidelines.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson, and you will find these guidelines in your agenda, and I will read those as quickly as possible. The Alexander County Board of Education has established the Award of Honor in order to recognize those individuals who have made exceptional contributions to Alexander County Schools. This award represents the highest honor that the Board of Education can bestow. Criteria for the selection of this award shall be based on exceptional contributions to the Alexander County School System or any of its individual schools in the areas of academics, athletics, administration, student achievement, or community service to the schools. The contributions may include recognition on a regional, statewide, or national level, as well as local notoriety, and shall have allowed our children the chance not only to grow and meet their full potential, but to excel as well. The final yardstick by which all nominees shall be judged as to the merit of his or her application is the positive effect on the quality of education in Alexander County as recognized by fellow students, teachers, administrators, and the community in general. The guidelines are as follows. A committee shall be established to receive and screen recommendations for this award. Neither current Board of Education members nor current school system employees are eligible for the award. The final decision shall be made by the Alexander County Board of Education. Nominations may be made from the second week in February through the second week in March of each year. Nominations will be kept on file for up to three years. Each individual nominated must have a minimum of three letters of recommendation by non-immediate family members. The award shall be given annually at the time determined by the Board of Education. And lastly, nomination forms are available at the Alexander County Board of Education Office. And my plea is make those nominations. We have a lot of deserving individuals. Thank you. And my plea is make those nominations. We have a lot of deserving individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very high honor. It was very, it was, it was a great experience last year being involved in that process and see that individual recognized last year. And I hope that we have some individuals in our community that will consider nominating folks very soon. I'll recognize Dr. Hefner again for our superintendent's report.
Thank you once again, Chairman Robinson. You have the superintendent's report attached to your agenda. I just want to reiterate that February is Career and Technical Education Awareness Month. And I just want to say publicly that I am so excited and proud of the new initiatives going on within this department and program. The presentation tonight was evidence of the progress being made and the children of this school system will benefit from the efforts of Crystal Hope and her CTE team. Please take some time this month just to extend a thank you note to a CTE teacher. Number two, this is per legislation. Each LEA superintendent shall report the following information to their local Board of Education, no later than February fifteenth of each year. There are two things I must report. The total number of each category of school mental health support personnel employed in the unit. And then the second thing is the difference from the previous school year in the total number of each category of school mental health personnel employed in the unit. You have an attachment and it's actually entitled, Report on Mental Health Support Positions. I would ask that you click on that in your agenda, please. And you see it's a comparison of two thousand twenty-two versus two thousand twenty-three in the areas of psychologist, guidance counselors, social workers, and nurses. And if you note, we have reduced from three psychologists to two. We currently are looking for a psychologist. They are pretty rare finds, but if you happen to know of one that is looking for a job, send them our way. Counselors, you can see we have increased one counseling position. You can see social workers there also. We have increased from twenty-two to twenty-three by one position. And in the nurse area, we have decreased one, but not really. And the reason being is because last year when we made the report, we had to report on the number of schools being served. And we had a nurse in a split position that has now been reduced to just one school. So that looks a little deceiving. And I also wanted to let you know that in the social worker category, you see that we have ten employed currently. Three of those social workers function as behavioral specialists. And we've been able to do that through the SOR funding. The last thing on my, on my report, I just want to recognize the following staff from our school system. They were highlighted on Facebook, but I just think it warrants mentioning in my report. The staff members I want to give a shout out to, Brenda Bowles, she is a teacher at Head Start. Kim Brown, Bethlehem Elementary School. Allison Brown, Bethlehem Elementary School. Melissa Cantor, Hidnite Elementary School. Lori Syke, West Alexander Middle School. Samantha Strathy, ACHS. And Loretta Thomas at West Alexander Middle School. These individuals have been recognized, but I want to give a shout out because they were recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for being in the second cohort of educators who will help create a more resilient, tech-savvy future for North Carolina schools. These educators, without being required to do so, completed forty hours of professional development provided by Rethink Education, an initiative of the Office of Virtual Instruction Support Services at DPI. This professional development equips educators to become experts in the new statewide blended learning model, which combine in-person and online instruction, as well as trainers and leaders in the communities. I'm so proud of these teachers and know they will lead the way to ensure that our students are fully prepared to succeed in a collaborative, digital, digital, excuse me, and agile workforce environment. Please join me in congratulating these staff members. And do you have any questions? Great. Thank you.
I will move on to new business. I'll recognize Dr. Anita Dal Revis, our Communications Director for our proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar with calendar law summary.
Good evening. Before you is the recommended twenty twenty-three, twenty-four academic calendar for Alexander County schools. The calendar was one of two created by the Calendar Committee, which was made up of staff, teachers, parents, and community members, and then put forward to the schools for input. The version in front of you was the most highly favored of the two options. And we ask that you consider it for approval tonight.
Do you have questions? Chairman Robinson, I know you served on the Calendar Committee. Did, did any other board members serve on that committee?
No, the current.
No, okay.
Pretty much transitioning to the new one. We was wrapping it up because it was going out of schools. You know, you have the, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You have attached the calendar law, you know, and, and you referenced, you know, committee. Just so folks know, that, that, that calendar law is very, it's got your hands tied. And if, if you follow much educational stuff going on in Raleigh, that seems to be one of the items that comes up every year. And you know, just, just so folks know, because one of the things is no earlier than the Monday closest to August the twenty-sixth can you start? But then you have to be done no later than the Friday closest to June the eleventh. But then you've got X amount of workdays that you are required to have. It, it, it's, it's a very constrained law. And you know, I've been on for a couple of years. And it does go to the schools and there are parents, there's, there's, you know, I, I noticed this year, I wanted to look around, make sure who and I was in room. There's, there's parents involved, as you said, community members. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a teacher from every school. You have at least one school administrator from each level, for instance, elementary, middle, high. I think you had maybe early college, well, early college is a little different, but you had the high school. You had a variety of people represented and then you push it out to each school. And so, I mean, it's, if you hadn't ever studied calendar law, it, it's very, it's very constrained.
My guess is because everybody can relate to a work calendar, people are very opinionated about it. But like Chairman Robinson is pointing out, you really have very little flexibility if you abide by what the state says. Now they, you know, every year, it's been around since two thousand four. And every year that somebody proposes that they change it, and there's a bill in the legislature right now that it could be changed for all districts. But traditionally, leadership in the North Carolina General Assembly has not supported that. So we'll see where that House bill goes. But right now, we're working under the law that is in front of you. And this is the calendar that we have fashioned based on those constraints.
Can I add one more note too?
Yeah.
Letters dates are mentioned on the counter and that will be finished by next December, correct?
Yes.
Because that's something for the last two years has drove some of these workdays that you'll see noted. And that, and you, you, if you talk to the elementary teacher, you're probably well aware of what letter stringing is. Could just denote that because I know a lot of people look at that if they see that letter string. Because that's been a very, it was pushed, it had to be done. And every elementary teacher's had to go through that. So those, some of those dates you see, that will be ending next December. So it might be hopefully that, that little bit of constraint with those days being designated will.
But I would like to add that we added those dates in to help our teachers because a lot of counties didn't add that in and it was just up to teachers to get it on their own and do it on their time, right?
Ms. Ryan, I appreciate you saying that. You're exactly right. This district decided that people who are being asked to fulfill the law to get that training should get paid for that time. So thank you. You're right.
Chairman Robinson, the only question that I have is what happened with the Head Start calendar and those kinds of things that would be prevented this time around? So that this school calendar and the Head Start would align? Because I know from my own household, that was a little bit of a challenge. One child going to school and the other one not. So.
So the Head Start calendar is the next item on the agenda. And Ms. Knapp worked with me after she saw what was proposed here to fashion their calendar. And with your approval on our calendar, then hers should pretty much fall in line with what we would potentially adopt.
I may add, in line with your comments about the Head Start concerns that we identified last time, one of the other issues was compliance in terms of number of effective days of classroom time for our students. Have we confirmed that this calendar is in line with regulatory, statutory requirements?
The, this calendar or the Head Start calendar? So yes, that's part of the committee's work is to make sure that we have at least one thousand twenty-five hours of instruction, which we do. We have beyond that.
Okay.
And then Ms. Knapp fashioned the Head Start pre-K calendar around this that's in front of you. So hers, hers is good on hours too.
On page two, you will see it noted, the number of optional days, letters days, required days, holidays, all of that. And under student days, you see the elementary students, one thousand sixty-two point five hours. And then middle and high, one thousand eighty-seven point five. As a school system, we have to go with the lesser amount. But you can see that that far exceeds even the one thousand sixty-two, far exceeds a thousand twenty-five.
So we did what we said we were going to do last month.
Any other questions? And with this will require action on our part. So what's the pleasure of the board of the proposed calendar?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Board Member Daganhart, second by Board Member Agles. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I should say Alexander Early College is working on their calendar, which is largely based on CBCC. So we expect to bring that to you next month.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time I'll recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson stepping in again to present our proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Alexander County Head Start pre-K calendar.
Good evening again. I have before you that Head Start pre-K calendar for next year. As Dr. Dal Revis pointed out, it is in line with the school system calendar.
Got any questions for Ms. Anderson? What's the pleasure of board on the Head Start calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Board Member Reese, second, Board Member Ryan. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
And you're going to stay with us. We're going to recognize her.
I'll remain and forge forward.
We'll recognize her now for our Alexander County Head Start Selection Criteria Ranking Sheet.
Thank you so much. So this is an updated sheet. The only change I can report to you is that under the income guidelines, SNAP has been added as a categorically eligible item. That is the only change from the previous selection criteria ranking sheet. But it does require approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by, first by Board Member Ryan, second by Board Member Bowman. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you all.
I'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahappy right now for our proposed Board of Education Policy Revisions First Reading.
We have three policies that are up for first reading tonight. And I will get input on those and bring them back to you next month. Those are the revisions to the policies. And then Mr. Robinson, if you want me to continue.
Please.
We have one new policy up for first reading tonight. And we will look for, look at that this month and come bring it back next month.
Thank you, Ms. Mahappy. All right. At this time, we will enter into closed session. Per General Statute one four three, three one eight dot eleven A six, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Sunday.
Second.
Motion, Board Member Ryan, second, Board Member Daganhart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.